All right, thank you LeBron and Stephen, can you introduce yourself sir?
Yeah, I'm Stephen Taylor. Um, I've been here in Louisville for about twenty-eight years. I'm originally from Georgetown, Kentucky. I'm an ordinary minister for thirty-two years, missionary Baptist. Uh, while we've been doing evangelistic work, uh, in the community, behind the scenes, and, uh, very much, uh, always trying to promote community reconciliation. So, uh, that's my main thing is that whatever issues it is we're dealing with, uh, we have with us is that we figure out some kind of way to reconcile it.
And it's always good to see you, my brother.
You too, man.
Take care.
I guess.
Long time, bro.
I know it, I know it.
Yeah.
Well, guys, uh, um, Brother Johnson, if you could introduce yourself, last time I think you were on mute and, uh, we didn't get a chance to hear from you.
I am Jay Johnson, uh, better known as Grandmaster Jay. I am the founder and the leader of the NFAC Coalition, the largest black militia in the United States right now, currently with international affiliates all over the world. Our main concern and our main mission is the protection of the black community, to include local policing, self-policing, community activism, education of firearms, responsible firearms for all African-Americans in this country and abroad, and the ensuring that the relationship between the policing, the government, and the community remains civil until such a time that we feel that we may have to defend ourselves, as we demonstrated in Stone Mountain, Georgia. I'm pleased to be here because I'm very curious about the dialogue that's happening and the image that's being portrayed to the world by Louisville, where the world is calling for some type of a stringent response, more so than awaiting for the judicial procedures to go through and the investigations to complete. So I'm here today to represent that portion of the nation that is calling for a stricter response. I'm hoping to be able to take back a message on behalf of the city of Louisville, that you're handling things in a proficient and tactical manner and that we need to wait for the process to play out. Otherwise, we're going to be forced to come visit your city, and I'm being very candid and frank here.
Well, thank you, my brother. I appreciate all of you all getting on this call. Funny thing I'm gonna ask, uh, and you can unmute yourself at the time that you wish to talk, but I'm gonna ask if everybody would mute themselves unless you're talking, uh, to get feedback, uh, if we're not doing that, so go ahead and do that. Uh, mute yourself until, uh, you'll be able to, until you want, uh, have a desire to talk. And I think we have, um, one person who's actually on a phone call. If you wanted to talk simply just, uh, uh, we know in terms of sending a message and I'll open it back up for you, uh, so we won't get the feedback. Um, so at, at this point again, I want to say, uh, on behalf of Mayor Fisher, uh, and the city of Louisville, we are greatly appreciative of this opportunity to have this dialogue, uh, because we too are seeking peaceful solutions and want to see justice, uh, happen. But we also want to make sure that, uh, we are able to operate in a peaceful environment to be able to see that justice they claim. And so, uh, we are supportive in terms of protest, uh, because we believe in the right of people to be able to protest. Uh, I myself, just to give you a little background, I, uh, not only have experienced in the private sector, uh, for twelve years, I worked G in finance, but also I'm a pastor in the community. And I pastor in the heart of the Parkland Neighborhood in West Louisville for the past twenty-five years and have been on the front line of a lot of protests and, uh, a lot of challenges in our community. And so, this is my life, to make sure that our community can progress. So that's why I'm encouraged and I'm excited to be able to talk with you all, so that we definitely can understand each other, get the best points out, and see how we can collectively move forward together, uh, in a way that we desire to do so. So with that being said, uh, LeBron, as you called the meeting together, uh, I wanted to turn it over to you to, uh, share in terms of what concerns or how you have, uh, have talked, uh, to your partners and continue the conversation so we can begin to look at how we can come to some resolution.
Okay, okay, uh, the reason, the reason that we're having this call is because, uh, other circumstances surrounding Brianna, um, the justification, the redlining, other investigations that have, that have been overdubbed since. As a matter of fact, Metro Council just, just had just called for some paperwork, you know, and, and, you know, from some, some, from some of the cases, and they've even said that they could put a gag order on it, you know, and not release it to the public, but I'm saying there needs to be some more transparency because it's taken too long and we saw what happened the first time, that, 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 you know, that, that, you know, with, with those first two days of the riot. And one thing I look at is I look at the situation that can take place. If, if another, if another, if a wrong decision is made. And see, and see the thing is, even if it's a, a decision made, there's not an announcement that has been made. And, and, and one of the reasons why this call is happening is because I'm hoping that we can come to some amicable terms and that there can be some smart decisions made, even if it means some people cussing their jobs, even if it means some people stepping down, that that needs to happen in this case because this is a case now that is not just a Louisville case. This isn't something that just swept up under the rug because now the eyes of the nation are on it and so it can't be swept under the rug. And then when I saw what Jim, I was trying to call him Jim, I was saying, when I saw what Grandmaster Jay, still a, still a legend, though. But, uh, when, when, when I see what, when I saw what he did and called Mount Georgia, that right there was a problem. And when I saw that, I was like, he could probably come and help us, because one of the things that we were doing, we're on the ground talking to some of the commanders of the police department, you know, on, it wasn't public and everything, but we were working on some things, on, on the undertow, to try to, to kind of try to bring, uh, police and community relations together, working on the events to put together and everything, and we, as a matter of fact, have a meeting tomorrow again with them. And our talk with them, when I, when I heard, uh, when I heard that what, what had happened in, uh, Stone Mountain, I was like, man, they could probably come and help us with the, with the policing that we need. Because we need the policing in our community and that's, that's an aspect that we were also looking at. So then, uh, so then I was like, man, so I tried to reach out to him, you know, upset, so then, uh, um, some people were, that they were, you know, talking about coming to the city and, and, and I knew they weren't coming to the city to talk. So that, then I put out other feelers to get in touch with him and he got in touch with me. And so, and so, and so now, knowing the severity of everything, this is not something that's gonna go away. This is not something that's gonna go away. This is something that has to answer, that somebody's gonna have to answer on this and it's gonna be, it's gonna be handled either in a peaceful way or a not-so-peaceful way.
Right.
And when I saw what happened here the first two days, I'm just imagining if a surprise, not guilty acquittal verdict of these officers happened, all these people that have been walking through for the last fifty days are all gonna come to this street at the same time and it's gonna be a whole different situation. And then I imagine his brother coming to town, and so when he said he was coming to Louisville, I was imagining him coming to town with all these people, if, you know, if it just wasn't the look. So, so then, so then, he, he, you know, I don't know how it happened, but the person got resources and he, somehow, he, he got my message and we, and we, and we had dialogue. So, so through the dialogue that I had with him and seeing that he was adamant about what he was saying, you know, about his beliefs and everything, but I, I would like to open up the floor to him next, you know.
Okay.
This is a situation, this is a situation where this is, well, the way I see it, is a situation where it's been a lot of bullying going on in the last ten years and it hasn't been anybody that can stand up to the bully. And now it's somebody that can stand up to the bully. And it just don't happen that Kentucky, he is stuck right in the middle of it because of this ideology which we can take in store three as well as the preference. And, and everybody's tired of it. And I really do believe that if this man makes the call that he is about making, where we sit geographically, we will have an inundated amount of people that will come to this city that don't have any interest in Louisville, any interest whatsoever in Kentucky. And they would just come down here just to make a statement and take still the mirrors back to their own state. And that can happen. And, and I really think we can sit down, really discuss this and really think what, what kind of decisions that we're gonna make on this. Because the decisions might be, there is no, okay, well, Chris, is there any pertinent information or anything where, where there's an incident of any way that it needs to be put on the table before a decision is made? Before, not a decision, before a decision is announced. The right decision needs to be announced here. This is, I mean, I can't even express how important this is, so this, this, not, and it's gonna go away. At first, we gotta understand that with first, I, I, I think that Grandmaster Jay really speaks to that, but not only he speaks to that, he's gonna have a lot of backup on this situation, and I know that.
Let me, uh, let me chime in to all the gentlemen, let me chime in.
And I know the toll from the hood to the mayor's office, and man, believe me, this people that's been working for the city that's like, let's let it burn, I'm gonna watch it from my house, they can. And you know the brothers I'm talking about, and I'm not gonna mention no names.
Let me, let me jump in right there, gentlemen, and, and speak here because I want you all to understand that I'm speaking to the members of the city council, the police chief, and everyone else. I'm gonna be frank, and that's the reason that I came, and that's the reason why I was open to a dialogue, because of the simple fact that I understand that the breadth and the width of this investigation has expanded because of some of the information that has come to light. We're fully aware of that. You are in the national spotlight right now. However, given the climate that we're in nationally, that Louisville does not want to be the receiving end of the next step in this progress, this process. What I mean by that is this. The NFAC appeared in Stone Mountain with fifteen hundred armed citizens legally to exercise our constitutional rights and to exercise our rights to bear arms. With the incident with Brianna going on, the outcry from the public for us to do the same thing in your city has gotten so great that if I was to announce that we were coming into your city, and I'm being very conservative in these estimates, we're looking at somewhere between five to six thousand people armed legally coming into your city with the sole purpose of looking for some type of justification or rectification of the situation. No one has been arrested in this case. Eighty-seven people were locked up yesterday and placed under felony charges for simply sitting on someone's lawn, yet no one has been arrested in Brianna's case. We understand that there may be some redlining going on. We understand that there may be some type of gentrification, modification for this secret hit squad that's supposed to have existed. That is not our concern. That is the concern of the government to fix, investigate with the help of the FBI. Our concerns are very immediate, that on that particular day, those officers went into this young lady's house who did not have a criminal record and they killed her, point blank. And we can't even get anybody charged, we're not saying convicted, we simply said charged, to show us that the judicial system is honest and fair in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. It is the mentality and it is the philosophy of the NFAC going forward to address any injustices like that that have been subjected to the black community. I would implore the members of city council and the new police chief that's now sitting in place to at least begin to think about the consequences, and I am here to bring that message to you. We're not a bunch of thugs, we're not a bunch of criminals. We're a bunch of law-abiding citizens who want the law to happen fairly for us. So what I'm coming to you all today is to say that I am the last step before I can hold back this floodgates of people that would put your city on the map in the worst way, and I'm being honest with you, gentlemen. I am not threatening you, I am promising you that if I can't get a resolution out of what we're talking about today, then what is going to happen in the next seventy-two to forty-eight hours is you're gonna see an influx of legally armed people that even the governor of Georgia found out he didn't have enough National Guardsmen to even overwhelm us. This is gonna be ten times worse, and I'm trying my best to avoid having to let that happen. I can stop it, but I have to have some type of information from the city of Louisville that is credible, instead of keeping us in the dark and making us think that you don't care about the death of this young lady, which was a grievous mistake by law enforcement under the Commonwealth. This is not something we're blaming on the mayor, this is not something we're blaming on the city council, this is not something we're blaming on the governor. This is something we're blaming on a system that failed a law-abiding citizen. So I would hope that someone who's on this call today can address those issues and give me, as we say in the military, a warm and fuzzy so that I can stand down the NFAC and anyone else who has no vested interest in your community, coming there to make things worse. If we have to come there to assist you with community policing, that's fine. If we have to come there to have a show of force that we can be civilized and demonstrate peacefully, that's fine. But to leave things in the configuration that they are right now, I will be so remiss not to tell you that there are a lot of people nationwide that are ready to descend on your city to extract justice if you cannot give us some type of guarantee that something is coming soon. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brother Johnson. I appreciate you and the words that you spoke. And, and let me also say that, first, I don't want, uh, it to be construed that I am the chief of police. I'm not the chief of police, I'm the chief of community building.
Oh, that's good.
I have six governmental agencies, uh, that report to me. Most of my agencies are the front-facing agencies, uh, Public Health, the Office for Safe and Healthy Neighborhood, uh, Louisville Zoo, Parks and Recreation, um, and also the Office of Resilience and Community Services and Youth Transition Services. So I'm on the mayor's staff, I report to the mayor, and so I just want to make that clarification in terms of, I do have the title of chief, but it's the chief of community building, not the chief of police.
Right, right, and, and, but, but Ben, where I'm at with it, brother, with, between you and David James, who's on here, president of the Metro Council, man, everybody can get in touch with everybody, man. That's how absolutely. Exactly, man, so it's not, it's no, every, if, if, if you on this call, then you can make it happen. And the reason, and the reason this call is happening is because you just heard what that brother said, and that, and that's a fact, man. And I would, I wanted people on the phone that can make, make decisions and have decisions made, that can kind of hear what's going on, and I'm glad that he just said everything he said. The end is large with the community, police, police parks, everything. But, but he needs to, is gonna come here to the community either way, so, so we can go here, 'cause, you know, it's like, it's, it's kind of a situation, man, we've been bullied too long and we got a big brother that's got our backs now, and we're gonna, and, and everybody's tired and ready to take a stand. And it's black, white, Latino, it's everybody. So, it, it, it's a different day, man, and it's gonna make a change, and we can do that. And we, and, and, and right now, if people need to step down, resign, whatever they need to do, that's what needs to happen in this case, man, because, like, like, I mean, you just heard what he said, and, and it's the truth, man, they gonna come everywhere. That, just, 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 just to be a part of history, or even all follow-ups or whatever, what, what people are coming, coming here for, whatever, all lives are on Louisville right now on this decision. So, you know, it, it, it would be who to make a very wise decision because life would not go back to normal after, if, if the wrong decision is made and they're thinking this thing is just gonna be swept under the rug.
Right, and, and, you know, one of the things is that is, is very clear. And I think that, you know, um, if you've looked at previous protests and you've seen the history of the city and the history of this country, and this, as we know, that this issue, uh, is not just a local issue, not even a national issue, this is a global issue.
Right.
You know, there are people all over the world that are looking to see in terms of how Louisville is going to respond, what's gonna happen, how the decision is gonna be made. Um, and as of right now, the decision's in the hands of the attorney general. Uh, all the information has been turned over to the attorney general, uh, that he would be the one that would be responding in terms of making a decision. And so, that's where the case stands in terms of now, and I can't mention much beyond that in terms of, of, you know, the case itself. But the one thing I can share with you is that he has all the information and we're waiting to hear back from him and his decision based on what his investigation.
Let me ask a quick question with regards to, I understand the details may be confidential and this is an ongoing investigation and we respect that. But is there any information that you can provide with regards to a timeline? This appears to be the sticking point of this entire case. It's been over a hundred days. What is the timeline? Give us something so that we can say, okay, we're gonna wait until this particular point in time? Because the people are tired of waiting. They're really tired of waiting. They didn't waste any time locking people up yesterday. They didn't have no problem with that. What is the timeline? We don't need to know the details. We don't need to know the gritty details, but you're not even telling us what the timeline is. You've got folks walking around who, who are under the impression that you don't care. And the danger in that is, when you act like you don't care, the people are gonna act like they don't care. And we have to get in front of that because that's not who we are. Can someone please speak to that?
Absolutely. And, and, and David, like, you know, I mean, I mean, uh, you said something right. Like in the sixties and the protests and everything, but man, one thing that they, they didn't have in the sixties, they, they, they had it, but they took them out. But they didn't have somebody that had the back of the community. Like, what this brother saying right here, it wasn't nowhere in the community.
Ho, hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second. First, I hear you, brother, but I, all, the only person I hear is you. I'm looking at two other gentlemen who haven't said a word the whole time we've been on here. I want to hear from them too. I don't just want to hear you interpreting what I said. Remember, I'm a representative of the people you don't want to come to your community. So the two other brothers I'm looking at right here, since we all black men on here together, and this is about a black sister that got killed, I would really like to hear from these two brothers respectfully.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, this is Stephen, and pleased to meet you, brother.
No, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor, no disrespect whatsoever, sir. He wants to hear from David James.
Oh, okay.
The offensive James right now.
Oh, I didn't see the, I thought he was on, no, I've been talking, so.
Right, 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 Ben, I'm just, I'm just saying that he's on there from down there, he's, he was a dealer, I can't answer the question on the timeline, and that's all you are.
Let me say something as it relates to the timeline and very specifically about that. And, and that is in terms of, as when the case was turned over to the A.D., that's one of the things that everybody's been asking in terms of, we too as an administration have been asking, what is the timeline? He has insistently said that he would not give us a timeline in terms of when we can expect a decision to be rendered. Um, and that has been his response from being consistent in terms of when he's spoken and any time he's spoken publicly. He's said, and has been consistently asked by the public, what timeframe are we looking at and how are you gonna respond? And he has consistently said, he is not gonna give us a timeline, he wants a fuller investigation, that's been his rhetoric. Uh, but we're continuing to push for that, we're continuing to urge the attorney general, uh, uh, to, you know, to be as swift as possible and as avid as possible uh, because the people want justice and they want it now. And so, that's where we do it with regards to timeline, that we don't have one specifically as it relates to the attorney general. It's on his time in terms of when he would decide to release that information. President General.
So, Herrn Mr. Jake, uh, good to meet you. Uh, I would differ a little bit with what Vincent James says, uh, and that is this. Um, the shooting occurred on March the thirteenth. Um, but because of his poor police management, uh, not enough resources were dedicated to this particular investigation. And so, the attorney general did not receive the full case to investigate until about three weeks ago. Even though the mayor got on TV and said that he gave the case to the attorney general in May, he only gave part of the case to the attorney general in May. And so, um, even at that, even at that, not having it ready in May and not even having it ready by the end of April is inexcusable. But that's because of his poor leadership. And, and so now we're stuck waiting for the attorney general, uh, to tell us what he has found out. Uh, and I'm not saying, uh, that, that we should excuse what, what had happened by any means. I don't think we should. That's why we're investigating what the mayor and mayor did not do, uh, as it relates to this case. In, in the best of worlds, uh, a week or so after the shooting took place, the mayor should have gotten on television and said, a horrible thing has happened. We did a search warrant and a unarmed woman was killed. And we're gonna get to the bottom of it, and we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. But he did not do that. And so, we're in this position that we're in right now. And so, that's why we don't have a resolution to tell you that it is or it's done because of his poor leadership.
Thank you for that information, but it now raises a different question. The question that, let me finish, please, let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. Let me finish, please.
Ninety-five percent. Excuse me?
Let me finish, please, to respond to what he just said.
Go ahead.
That's fine, and thank you for that information. But the question that they now raises is, well, the attorney general reports to the governor. So are you now telling us that the true dialogue that needs to happen should be with the governor and not at the city level?
No, sir. The attorney general is independently elected constitutional officer. He reports to nobody but the citizens of Kentucky.
Well, the citizens of Kentucky appear to be expressing their will to have something done right away. So are you now saying that the attorney general is not responding to the will of the people who elected him? The mayor is non-responsive, the attorney general is non-responsive. So now you're telling us that the entire governmental structure of Kentucky is as backwards and racist as the world wants to think that it is? That if this had been a white woman that had been shot in her home by the police, that we would have seen it all over the news and that there'd be somebody in custody right now? Now you're telling me that an individual who has to report to nobody but who's supposed to reflect the will of the people is gonna take his sweet time? Let me ask you all a question. Then if there's no check and balance for the attorney general, then what is the purpose of having him? Please, somebody speak to this because this is not going the way that you want it to go. Thank you.
Let me share this, let me share this with you, and let me say this, let me say this, let me say this, let me say this. That's the way you talk, David. I just let you talk, I just let you talk, I let you talk, and I'm gonna let you talk. We're gonna be respectful and we're gonna honor one another as black men on this call and be truthful. So, I allow everybody to talk, and whoever talks, they'll do that. To respond to your question as it related to, again, to the timeframe, I'll share with you. And, and one of the things that, that I would definitely specify that when the mayor turned over, why it went to the attorney general. Uh, the mayor has requested, requested that the attorney general and has also have an independent investigation with the FBI and he's turned that, so, you know, over to them because he wants to make sure that truth comes out and justice is taken and rendered. And so, that's why the attorney general, he has the information, that's why it's gone to him. Uh, also that the, because an independent investigation with the FBI and those two have happened as a direct result of the mayor requesting this. In May, the attorney general had ninety-five percent of the information in terms of it leads to the case from the city. There was a five percent, of the, five percent of the information which had to deal with the forensic that had, had to come later, it wasn't ready. We sent over a thousand pages of documents as related to this case. There was enough for him to get started to begin with the case. So it has been in his hands since that time. And so, we, the mayor has explicitly expressed that his desire is to make sure that truth comes out and that justice is taken.
And I would respond to that by saying, uh, Grandmaster Jay, if I gave you a book and asked you to review it, and I only gave you ninety-five percent of the book, you can't review it.
Thanks.
So, uh, I would say the mayor's been a little disingenuous in that conversation. Uh, the second thing I would say to you is, is that, uh, I'm not sure of how the political structures of every state is, uh, but I know in the state of Kentucky, the attorney general is independently elected by the people. Um, second thing I would say is that the police department had the case from March thirteenth to, you know, three weeks ago. And so, uh, that's a long time. Uh, I would suggest that, that I would like for the attorney general to give some sort of timeline on when he anticipates that he's gonna be finished with that. But I'll also tell you, he's only had it for three weeks. So, uh, that is what complicates the situation.
Thank you for that answer. Uh, that's still, I mean, that's good to know, uh, but it still raises some dire concerns, my friend, and, uh, because I'm looking at the screen, I'm pretty sure that you could stand on the square when you tell me that those things that you told me are factual and that because he's only received this three weeks ago, uh, the normal turnaround time that we've seen in cases that have been prosecuted where we've had shootings, we've at least had someone arrested and charged while the attorney general decides whether or not we're gonna go to a grand jury or an indictment. We all know the process. Kentucky is a Commonwealth, just like Virginia is a Commonwealth. I, having grown up in a Commonwealth, I understand all of that. But what I'm saying that in the, in, given the circumstances that we're in right now, given the climate of the world that we're in right now, that I would think that the sense of urgency to address this before things spiral hardly out of control and we have a worse situation than we have right now is something that I would think that all of us would be, uh, inclined to prevent on all levels. And it appears to us that there is a sense of apathy, uh, along with the urgency of getting this done. I'm not refuting what you said, but as I said before, the purpose of me coming to this meeting was to get enough information that I could go back and speak to the population and say, here's exactly what's going on, folks, everybody pump your brakes until such a time. But when we don't have an outflow of information like what's coming out of this call, when we have to dig and hear all of these different excuses of who got what when, it sounds like the ineptness, it sounds like the... it sounds like the ineptness, it sounds like the, the, the lack of concern points back to a very dangerous pattern when it comes to African-Americans when they're gunned down in this country, whether it be by the police or at the hands of another citizen such as in the Ahmaud Arbery case, which we also got involved with in New, in Brunswick in Georgia, which showed a complete lack of concern all the way up to the district attorney and so forth. So what we're hoping and what we're praying is that we're not looking at this again, and if we're looking at it again, I'm gonna tell you all right now, we're out of gas, we're, we're out of patience, you're out of time, something needs to happen, someone needs to step forward and tell the public, this is what we're doing, we don't need the details, we don't need a definitive date, but what I'm trying to make you aware of, every black man on this call, if you are a true black man and not an Oreo, I'm gonna call it out loud, that what you're sitting on right now is a powder keg, and it's gonna take more than what you've ever seen before to put it back, and we're trying our best through a dialogue of information and communication that we can avoid this conflagration in your city. I know the pastor doesn't want that, I know the members of the mayor's office does not want that, I know the members of city council don't want that, I know the citizens of Louisville don't want that, yet there are people in the world who do because they don't understand the procedure, they're not respective of the process, and they've been short-changed and lied to so much that they're thinking this is the same old, same old. Now, we do know that the police chief got let go and that some folks probably need to step down and that this system of, of, um, of, 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 I don't know what to call it, this good old boy network atmosphere that appears to pervade all of these places in the South is what the people are seeing. Perception is some people's reality, gentlemen, and the perception right now is that Louisville don't give a damn. That Louisville says y'all can protest all you want, so what? That Louisville is gonna do the same thing that other places like Charleston, South Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina, Cincinnati, Ohio, and a few other cities have done when it's obvious that a crime has been committed against a law-abiding citizen, not a criminal who was arrested and something went wrong, not somebody who was in a police chase, not one of your top ten most wanted, you got the FBI investigating in your house because somebody dropped the ball. And all of you brothers that are sitting there in all of these high positions who have insight and visibility and contact with these people, as the gentleman said, cannot sit here on this call and tell this brother who's trying to stop an army from marching into your city legally armed and y'all don't want this to be the shock heard around the world? 'Cause we're hearing about all the things that are going on in Louisville, people shooting off the roof, sniping at people, all kind of craziness going on because of this is the atmosphere we're in, gentlemen, and we're trying to achieve peace, we're trying to achieve unity, but most importantly, we want some justice, not just a slogan, but some action. So at this point, what I'm hearing is that it's out of all of you all's hands. Everybody on this call is a victim to what has happened thus far, everybody is waiting right now. And what I came to let you know today on behalf of the NFAC and the forty-seven million other African-Americans in this country is that you run out of time, you inherited something that you probably don't deserve. I've been to your city before, I was there for the mount for the Muhammad Ali funeral, I was at the KFC Center with a beautiful time, even though I lost my car and had to walk around downtown trying to figure out what parking deck I parked in all night, but that's irrelevant, other than that, you're not the city that you want this in. And if this comes to your city, I'm trying to let you know if you can give me something or someone that we can go talk to, if that person is not in this room, that's fine. If I gotta reach out to the attorney general directly, that's fine, if I got to call the Congress, the debt of the governor, I will. If I have to call the congressman, I will, I don't know how much you guys know about me on this call, but I'm a former candidate for the presidency, trust and believe, I know all the people in all the right places to make the phone calls, but I'm talking to you 'cause this is your house.
Absolutely.
So, I, I hear you're, uh, but we don't, uh, the attorney general does, we, we don't control him, and I would, I would suggest that's probably who needs to be on the call too.
And I would definitely agree with that.
Can, i- is it, is it possible, gentlemen, for us to, is it possible for us to arrange a call with the attorney general on the call? And who needs to make that happen? Is that, is that someone that the mayor has to invite him in? Can one of the citizens invite him in? Can we get the attorney general to sit on this call and then join us in this dialogue so that we can avert a worse situation in your city, and I'm being extremely honest with you?
No, we can definitely try to get him on a call, and to set something up, we'd be glad to be able to facilitate that. Uh, but again, it would have to be his decision in terms of being on the deal, but we would definitely take ownership of being able to get him on a call and make that happen.
Gentlemen, I remind you of what Martin Luther King said, he said that at some times, silence is betrayal. His willingness or unwillingness is an answer to us, if he answers and he comes, fine. If he blows us off and doesn't wanna talk, that is an answer, either way, we'll enjoy either one. So I would say this time, this has been a great time talking with you, gentlemen. I don't feel like this, I mean, we got some good answers here, thank you for explaining what you have explained for me to take back to my constituents, but I don't believe that the individual that can answer the question that's burning across America is on this call, and it's above and beyond the way your city, your state is structured for us to get the answer, there's no need for me to question these fine gentlemen here because of the simple fact that, as you said, you've done your due diligence and now it's in someone else's hands. So the real reason that Louisville, Kentucky appears to not give a damn about the death of Breonna Taylor is simply because an individual that was elected by the people is not doing the will of the people and that person is not involved in this dialogue. If I'm missing something, I would like for you all to let me know, but other than that, I thank you for your time. I respect all of you for the job that you're doing, but I have not gotten the answer that I need to stop what's going to happen. Gentlemen, is there anything else we need to talk about?
There's nothing I wanna talk to you about. Uh, I, I just wanna make sure you're fully informed when I say this, okay? Uh, when the attorney general and the FBI were asked to look into this matter, they were asked to not only review, but to, to investigate again, uh, what are the findings were determined. So I just want you to be aware of that, okay?
I understand, I understand that there are some, some extenuating circumstances that have come out with regards to some of the other factors, I'm aware of all of those, and I understand those are separate investigations because they lead to a much deeper problem, a much deeper problem. But I think that the American public is understanding of that, they're not stupid. But the immediate crime, the three officers are still employed, even if they're off duty or off the desk, but they're still getting paid, haven't been fired from their jobs, one of them was, and then he, he, he was, but he petitioned to get his job back, but he petitioned to get his job back, the audacity of that, when this woman's family still hasn't gotten any justice. So we understand that there may be some other things going on, but what we find interesting and what we find most egregious is that they weren't even arrested, not even arrested, even if they're out on bond or something, they're not even in the system. Do you know how that looks to black Americans right now in spite of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and everyone else? I don't have to go through the list, we are out of, we, we, we're, we're out of gas, we're out of gas. George Floyd was the last fume in the tank, now we on a wish and a prayer. So now that you've got a black militia that has pledged to defend black people, it is your responsibility now to make us think that you're doing that for us and not leave that in our hands. 'Cause there are those of us out there who don't care about what you're doing, and I'm sharing with these sentiments, they're, these are not my sentiments, these are the people's sentiments. They're tired of the excuses, they're tired of waiting, they're tired of saying it's in someone else's hands, they're tired. And they're tired now with their legally ready to do something about it, and the only thing standing between that is you guys and this attorney general. I would implore you to get him on a call, please reach out to me, I am, I am here, I am available at all times. If you can get him, I would definitely be there to hear from him. What is the prognosis for us getting justice for Breonna Taylor? And I thank you for your time, gentlemen, and bless your families, and I'm so glad that we could all get together like brothers, like we back in the village and work some things out.
That's right. But, um, I have, I have one question for you, I just wanna make sure that I got your contact information so I can make sure that, that we're able to set this, uh, set the call, and I wanna be clear too that when we get the attorney general on the call, is it all the individuals who are on this call currently that you would like on the call as well?
I would like, uh, Vin- Vin- Vincent, I believe that you should have everyone who's present so that we don't have to try to remember what someone said, uh, but I do believe that, because you all represent the local, the local face, as I would say, the force on the ground, uh, but we just need him to answer those questions. My contact information is available, LeBron has my contact information, I have him on speed dial, he's number two right now next to my mother, uh, but he can call me at any time and I would definitely make myself available even if I have to, uh, leave someone behind, you know what I mean? Thank you, gentlemen.
I understand.
I will talk to you all real soon and I salute all of you all in Louisville, thank you, NFCC for life.
I appreciate you, brother, Glenn.
Love y'all, thank you.
Hey, hey, Daddy, David, man, get in touch with us so we can get this stuff in order, man.
Shut this off, cut that off, cut that off, cut that off. You just witnessed a meeting between myself, the city council, and representatives of the mayor's office for Louisville, Kentucky concerning the murder of Breonna Taylor. They do not want the NFAC to march into their city fully armed because they know we don't come to protest. We're not coming to demonstrate, we don't come, we come because we want justice. Now, as you all have heard, that's why I let you hear this, so there's no misconstruing of what happened. The attorney general is the one that has to make the decision, the attorney general is someone that does not report to anyone. He is elected by the people and it appears that he is not doing the will of the people. So therefore I have requested that they bring him before me. Once they bring him before me, as you all will see, I'm gonna ask a very direct question. When will we be able to see some traction in getting justice for Breonna Taylor? If he gives me a definitive timeline, NFAC members, I want you to stand by because one day after that, if we don't get what we want, we march into Louisville. So that is gonna be based on another meeting that will probably be coming forth. In the meantime and in between time, I want y'all to stay very close attention to what's going on. This is how you get results, you don't just go out and sit and wave and signs and singing and all of that. You have to engage these people and find out, "What are you doing for my people?" Because there's no reason for us to be where we are right now. When I know something, you'll know something, NFAC, stay on alert, and everybody else stand by. In the meantime, I've got more work to do on your behalf. I told you, I will teach for you and I will preach for you and I will fight for you and I will die for you. NFAC for life, motherfuckers.